If you'd like to start. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington Special Meeting, our joint study session with our great Youth Council. This City Council Special Meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. I'll call this meeting to order. And this is an informal meeting between us and the Youth Council. And I, instead of having Chris to do roll call, let's go through and have everybody introduce ourselves and we'll start with the Youth Council, and I will start with Naomi. I'm going to go across the line here.
Hello, my name's Naomi. I am a senior at Cambridge High School, and I am currently the Vice Chairman at the Youth Council.
Welcome. Freddie.
Hi, my name is Freddie. I'm a senior at Kentwood High School. And I'm a Youth Council member.
Welcome, Amelia.
I am Amelia. I am a junior at Kent Lake High School, and I am the Chair.
Welcome. Fatima. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
No, but it's fine. No, you're good. I am Fatima, and I'm a junior at Kent Lake, and I'm the event planner for the Youth Council.
Welcome, Fatima. Thank you. Joshua.
Hi, my name is Joshua. I'm a sophomore at Kentwood, and I'm the treasurer.
Welcome. Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle. I'm a junior. I can't wait. And I am a Covington Youth Council member.
Welcome. Katie.
Hi, I'm a sophomore at Kentwood High, and I am Assistant Event Planner.
Welcome. Shelley.
Hi, I'm Shelley. I'm a Youth Council Adult Leader for a while now.
Welcome. Chuck.
I'm Chuck, and I'm the other Youth Council Adult Leader, and only been here a year. So happy anniversary to me.
Yay.
Welcome. And let's go around. Oh, Jacqueline.
Hello, I'm Jacqueline. I am the Staff Liaison for the Youth Council, and it is by far one of the favorite parts of my job.
Welcome, Jacqueline. Let's go through and do Council. Joe.
I'm Justice Momo, Member of the Council. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Harderhausen, Council Member. Nice to see all of you as well.
Sean.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sean Smith. I'm on the Council as well. Good to see everyone.
And Christina.
Hi, friends. I'm zooming in from my phone today, shuttling my boys around to soccer. It's so great to see you guys. I cannot wait to hear what you have for us tonight.
Thank you, Jared.
Hey, Jared Kocel. I'm just one of the Council members.
Ethan.
Hi, everyone. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director, just listening in tonight.
Regan.
Good evening, Regan Bowley, Covington City Manager.
Krista.
Krista Bates, City Clerk and Executive Assistant for the City of Covington.
Thank you all very much. I am your Mayor Jeff Wagner, and it is a pleasure to be here tonight with each of you. I am really looking forward, like several of our Council members said, to hear the updates that you have for us. And with that, I am going to turn it over to, is it Amelia or Naomi? Who's going to be in charge tonight?
It'll just kind of be all of us, I guess, but we do have a presentation prepared, so if Josh could get that running real quick, and then we can just get started.
Great.
Yeah, I'll get that started. My computer sometimes doesn't love when I show my screen, so let's probably fingers and see if this works. Right, it's loading.
We can see it though. Yeah, there it is. So we did just go through introductions, but we can just go back through really quick and just go over the last two parts. So, again, my name is Amelia, and my reason for joining the Youth Council was just to be able to get involved and just like see change happen for people my age and people like some of my friends and people would just go to my school in general. And then my favorite establishment in Covington would be Trapper Sushi, probably. And there's some. Oh, sorry. That was my bad. Okay.
Okay, I can go next. So the reason I joined Youth Council is kind of the same as Amelia's reason, because I also wanted to get involved, and I'm like a big believer that if you want to see change, you got to like make the change. And then my favorite establishment in Covington is the Chick-fil-A, because I work there, so like I'm always Chick-fil-A every day.
Yeah, I could go next. My name is Freddie Castillo. I go to Kentwood High School. My reason for joining this council is similar to all of them. I do really want to be part of the change and everything. It's like, and I think it's good to like always see changing, because like change is like change could be for the better. My favorite is I live in Covington, also Chick-fil-A, since I work there as well. Yeah.
I'm the next. So my reason for joining the Youth Council was because at the time I was new to Covington, and I wanted to learn about the city and more involved with the area I was in. And my favorite establishment is probably Ding Team in Covington. It's about a post office. They're really good.
I can go next. My name is Michelle, and I joined the Youth Council to provide my insight and do my best to be involved in the community, and my favorite establishment in Covington would be Target.
And then Katie, if you want to go real quick, and then that'll be all of us.
Yeah. I'm from Kentwood. I joined Youth Council because I wanted to get involved and be active in our government, and I guess my favorite establishment would be Eat the Frog Fitness, actually.
Cool.
Okay, Josh, we're good to keep. Yep, there you go. And then we do have this as well for you guys, if you guys want to go through that really quick. Members, you're on the spot, too.
I'll just call everybody out. Jared. Reason before becoming a City Council Member and a favorite establishment.
Um, my reason is fairly similar, I would say, to some of you for joining the the Youth Commission. I really just was new to the city, really wanted to get engaged and just kind of learn more about the history of the city and how local government worked, and, and I've learned that I loved meeting new people, and I liked being able to represent them, so that's why I became a City Council Member, and my favorite establishment. Ooh, I think I'm going to have to go with Chick-fil-A, because their spicy deluxe is unbeatable.
Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, it's not an easy answer to that second one. You know, my parents were very, since I was very young and still within me that you have to give back to your community, so we were always volunteering. Whether it was building houses for homeless people or collecting food for food drives, you know, we were every, if not every weekend, it seemed like every other weekend, we had some type of volunteer event. So I grew up with the philosophy and a value system that told me I needed to. If I saw a problem and no one was doing anything about it, then I was elected, and you have to get involved to make change. So it was with that mindset. I wanted to see if I could make Covington a better place, and that's why I ran, and so been on Council now over seven years. And my favorite establishment, there's so many, the one I spend probably a lot of time in is Home Depot. Some days it's six or seven trips to Home Depot, but but Red Robin over there is really nice, too.
Christina.
Yes. Oh, gosh, my brain is going a million miles an hour right now. So my name is Christina Solis. And the reason I became a City Council Member is simply because I just love people. I love interacting with people. I love to see people change, and I wanted to be the change that I wanted to see. Ultimately, I didn't have a problem with Covington. I wasn't new to Covington. I had been around for well over a decade, and I absolutely love Covington. I still do. Proud to be a Covingtonian, very proud to sit on our amazing council. And I can't, you guys, I just cannot with my favorite establishment. I'm like Fred Meyer every other day. I go to Kohl's to return things. I love trappers. I do love trappers, but I, I, I cannot, I cannot. I can give you like a top 10, but that's about it. I love all of it. Thank you.
Jennifer.
Um, I'm Jennifer. As I said earlier, my reason for becoming a City Council Member was I got involved with some, some commissions and sincerely loved the positive energy that comes from the City of Covington, from council, from staff, and wanted to be a bigger part of that. And I had run a campaign to save Cedar Valley, the little elementary school within Timberlane, and I realized how powerful people are and how they need representation that represents all of them, not just people that are elected and represent their own interests. And I thought that was an important thing and was really excited about being on Council and, like I said, serving with all these positive people and making a difference by representing all of you that are a part of our community. My favorite establishment, I've been sitting here thinking about it, because I am all over Covington with my family, often do all of my errand running, and I think my favorite is Young Chefs Academy, YCA. The specific reason is the woman who owns and runs that place, Deb, Chef Deb. If you don't know her, meet her. Amazing human being. Really, I always take my kid and pick her up, even though, you know, there's other kids that can drive and my husband and stuff, because I love to go see Chef Deb, so I highly recommend it. And it is next to Trappers, and I can see Amelia there, too.
Joe.
Hi, I'm Joe Simomo. I became, I ran for the Council originally. As a young father, I had a four-year-old at the time. He's now 14. And he, and we were looking for lots of things to do in the city, and we kept having to go outside the city. And so I ran to help make, make that change, to ensure that the young families didn't have to leave the city to ensure we could have recreation, and we're growing our parks, and it's nice to see that we're, we're going to have more parks in the coming ti, in the coming days, coming weeks, coming months, coming years. It's an enjoyable thing to have that, and we get to stay in the city more. And my favorite establishment is LA Fitness. I like to work out, so.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Porter, Council Member. And the reason that I became a City Council Member, ran for City Council, I've, I've always been involved in volunteering as well. Girl Scouts as a, as a young girl, all the way up and into CYO, and volunteering at my church, and then I took a little hiatus from that, as I was finding my way in the world, and then began, began a campaign with neighbors that were concerned about preserving some of the trees in the neighborhood, and that's something that everybody, most people are valued in our neighborhood. So as I was going through that process, I started coming to Council Member meetings and planning commission meetings and just seeing how everything worked, and I was really intrigued by the process. And one of the things that really stuck out is that there's a lot of times people sit in the back and think, oh, somebody else is going to do it, and realizing that it really does take the commissions, it takes volunteer residents to help pitch in and make a city what it is, and we have a lot of great volunteers in our community, and I wanted to continue to augment what I can do for Covington. So as far as favorite establishment, and we lived here for almost 20 years, and so there's lots of establishments still there that hold very precious memories, family gatherings and things, and celebrating special events, but probably most recently, I would say Misa. Over by Home Depot.
And for me, I moved here in 88 and started getting involved even before I opened my store and sat on 13 different organizations any given time, because I wanted to make a difference in this community and help form it as a city. And I just enjoy planting seeds and watching things grow to fruition, and it's not just planting seeds to see buildings grow or parks grow, but to see people grow and to see them grow and become their highest potential. I've been on the Council now for wow, this is 19 years, and I've enjoyed every single minute of it. And like everyone else, I have a hard time describing a favorite establishment, because my girls, Michelle and I go to just about every restaurant. We enjoy Fred Meyer and Costco immensely, because Costco seems to be my meeting place for, to meet everybody. But I really enjoy that. And Shelley, did you, were you starting to, I think you and Chuck should say why you got involved as well? And did we get everybody on the Youth Council? Did we miss somebody?
I think so. I think everybody shared a lot. Yeah, I checked, and I think that, yeah, I think we got them.
Okay.
I love hanging out with youth. Pretty much that simple. I think you kids probably won't know the book Miss Piggly Wiggly. Some of you older people might, but I always joke that I'm Miss Piggly Wiggly. Kids like to come and hang out. There was a time at my house where all the neighborhood kids came over to my house to play, because my goddaughter was here, and I don't even have any of my own children. And what I love more than anything is helping people find their path. I'm, I'm not someone who wants to listen to you tell me what's wrong with the world. I want to talk about what we can do for the world, and then figure out how we can take those first little tiny steps. Because I believe if every single person in this world took one little tiny step forward to make the world better, holy crap, could we do amazing things. So that's why I've been involved with the city. I was lucky. One time I had a friend, really young, probably 20. We were talking about the world in general, and he said, you know, you got a lot of opinions. What are you doing about it? And that felt to me like throwing the gauntlet down, and I've never forgotten it. So whenever I feel like I have a complaint, I immediately turn it around to what am I, what can I do about it? And so that's why I joined and will continue to be part of this city as long as I'm here, and I am with, I have no favorite establishment. I my favorite establishment is the establishment of Covington, because I rarely have to leave Covington. I mean, there's times where I don't even leave the city, because it's all right here, and so work, live, play, the goal. You nailed it, because I don't leave.
Well, I guess I'm the last, and I'm Chuck, and I joined to do this work, because I've done this most of my life. I've been active in the Masonic Quarter. I volunteered on telethons. I marched in Washington. I saw Martin Luther King. Activism has been in my blood for my entire life, and I like to see the kids get involved, too, because they're the future, and they're the ones that are going to change what's wrong with our society and our environment and make it a better place, and I just enjoy that. As far as favorite establishments, I'm still, I'm only here four years, and I still go back into Seattle to buy bagels. So it's a tough call for me, but I spend a lot of time at Costco, just like everybody else.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone. We can, so we're just going to go over what we did this year, just kind of both as a Covington Youth Council, but then also just within our community. So feel free, if you have any questions, to just learn anything out. And so our calendar so far for 21 and 22. In the beginning, we had, of course, in January, we had our meetings, and then we also had the Youth Action Day in Olympia. And that was just virtual this year, and we'll highlight on that again later in our presentation, and then February, a regular meeting. Then now, March, we had our Dot the Street cleanup, which we'll go over again later, our meeting, and then this. And then for the future, April through June, we have more meetings, and then July, the Covington Days Festival and Parade, as you all should know, and then we also have our regular meeting. Then August through October, regular meeting, November, the food drive again, and then December, the holiday celebration. And so we do plan on filling that up with more stuff as time goes on. Okay, so I'll start off by talking about our holidays. Drive through some of the top, we got on our top right corner, we have Josh and Katie right up there rocking the Christmas look, and so it was a huge success. We got about 107 letters for Santa, which was super fun, because the kids, we would, we had this whole setup, and it was really adorable with these blowups, and it was just super cute, and we had, like, the kids would drive up, and they'd be super excited to see us, and they'd wish us happy holidays, and we would wish them back to them, to them, too, and they would just hand us the letters, and they were so excited, so that was so cute, and we were able to respond to all of them, and we, I know that we all had a great time doing them, and especially responding to them, that was just so adorable, because some of these kids were just saying that they they were super happy that they got their COVID vaccine, or some of them were just saying that they like love their sister, and I'm like, these kids were just so adorable. And so we had a lot of fun being able to talk to them and to interact with people, because during COVID, of course, we've all had limited interaction with the public, in a sense, like that sounds a little bit grim, but it's true. And so we did all have a good time being able to talk to them and have them come out and support us, and we support them.
So for the Covington Storehouse Food Drive, we met up at the Covington Storehouse on November 13, and there we weighed and boxed all the food with a joint effort of the Kentwood Dance Team, and we ended up collecting a total of 1,001 pounds of food for the storehouse. This was a very fun experience, and I was so glad we got the opportunity to help out and collect all this food for everyone at the new store.
Okay, so LIAA happened back in January, and it was really fun. Actually, there was a lot of youth there. I was really impressed with how involved they were in the actual Action Day. And I really liked how communicative they were with the adults who also ran it, and how much they got involved in their own communities. I thought that was really amicable. I was a little disappointed, though, this year that was online, so I'm just hoping we could go in person next year or soon. And it was really enlightening to hear about all these, like, policymaking and stuff like that. And I just really wanted to highlight how fun it was and how much I hope for more participation next year by us and more adults.
All right, so Word Relief Next Gen. Internship is more of a community event rather than City Council or like the Youth Council. But with the Word Relief, the internship, the Next Gen, is they work with immigrants to help them, like, with the displacements, once they come in, help them find homes and all these other things that they need, once they're like traveling from different areas. Either they're escaping from wars, whatever it is, from their home country to the new country. And then with the internship last year, I did specifically, we taught like immigrant children from ages, I'm pretty sure first grade to like fourth grade, and I taught the youngest one, and they're the sweetest, like, super energetic, but like cutest, sweetest kids you ever meet, and they're also super smart. Like, I was talking to them about like things that they were like, oh, yeah, no, but like, like the T levels and like earth, and like everything, and I was like, okay, they're a lot smarter than me, but they're super sweet, super nice, and we pretty much just informed them about like environmental issues. And then like kind of get them to be able to do their social skills, because a lot of the time during the summer, the internship was during the summer, they don't like, this immigrant kids don't really have time to like practice their English, since once you're like surrounded by your native, like your family, they speak their native tongue. So they kind of lose that, like, English proficiency. It's like the, like camp and the internship just helps them to keep their English proficiency as they go into the next school year. Then I might have Freddie, regarding to a little bit of what I'm saying, but more suitable.
Yeah, thank you, Naomi, for giving this up to me, Todd. It was, yeah, since I was a part of, well, I was kind of part mentor, mentoring of Naomi in this internship. It did give me a lot of experience and a lot of skills that would have had otherwise. I do find it is a great opportunity, especially when talking to someone that has a very different culture and very different community that, that we haven't interacted with. It really did give me a lot of insight into like the, into the struggles of immigrants, especially immigrant children with, with not knowing English, and especially how to communicate with anyone that does not know English here, is from different culture. Fatima, do you want to add on to what I said?
Yeah, sure. So my thing, the best part for them was like, since many of them were like still kids, and like they just got here, they didn't really know how like the school environment was. And so they were in like a classroom environment, and like they learn like the raising your hand, or like asking to go to the bathroom, or like all the basic stuff, so that for like their next school year, they're not going to be like thrown in and like a completely new school system, like be confused. And that was, yeah, I think Freddie and Naomi covered up all of it. So on March 16th, we had a cleanup event, and it was, we adopted a section of like the 240th Street in front of Covington Community Park, and we got to clean up the street around it, and we picked up like a total of nine bags, which was pretty impressive. And we also had donuts, and that was fun.
Yeah, and then I'm just going to restate our vision. So our vision is to cultivate an engaged, authentic, and authentic community of youth, and our mission is to provide teens in Covington and neighboring suburbs opportunities and resources to flourish civically, socially, and academically, creating a vibrant, trend-setting community with safe spaces where youth can be, come, well-rounded individuals, and that's our goal. With everything that we did this year and everything that we're putting on doing in the future is to create a better community for the youth.
Okay, so I'm going to start us off with going over what we are hoping to see in Covington in the future. So Joshua, go to the next slide. So for many of our teens in the area, they don't often have ways to spend their time, because many things in our community are often, or we have noticed, are focused towards adults or younger kids in elementary schools, and there's nothing wrong with that. We just feel that we need to see more teen-focused events, because as the slide says, when there's more stuff for teens to do, it keeps them safe, and it'll keep them in Covington, because I know that many of my friends at the moment, when they're bored, they just go to McDonald's and just like hang out in their cars. When they're bored, they just go to McDonald's and just like hang out in their cars. And while that is fun, like the first or second time you do it. That gets old and so many people resort to other things that may not be keeping them as safe. And so. We do really feel that we need to have more for them. And so. Because I, I feel lucky at least that I do sports and I'm involved in school and so I'm busy from when I wake up at seven. Till I get home from track at five, that I am able to fill my time well. But that's not the case for many other people. And so we do think that. If we're offering more events for teens, we're keeping them safer, we're keeping them involved and we are keeping them on that track academically and socially. And civically, as Josh said in the previous slide about what our mission is. We're able to keep them on that right track by giving them safe activities to do. So whenever you're ready, Josh.
Alright, so now we're gonna talk about some like our upcoming ideas or these are more the long-term ideas. We do have some other ones, but. Uh, one of the ideas I had is for like a night market. I don't know if you guys have been to the night market in. A whole few at the Ritten Pavilions once in a while. It's a really cool event. So a night market. They happen all over the place, but it's just like a farmer's market at night kind of. Um, there will be like food trucks and live music and some cool vendors, some like local businesses. Or just independent people selling stuff. And I think that's something that. If we wanted to do that, that Youth Council could work with and it would. Be a fun activity for people our age.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk about Lake Point as Amelia was talking about. When teens get bored here, they tend to like. Do something simple or do something dangerous or even just go outside of Covington. Which is not really what we want. So when Lake Point is built here, a shopping center. Will be able to keep teens in Covington and be able to have them be safe and not go out to other cities and do dangerous things.
Freddie, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I do want to add like a big point that, uh, that I am not seeing presented here. It's like. But a lot of these social events and being civically engaged also also helps mental health. There's a definitely studies on Verkant, if you guys have read them. That, uh, that actually says a lot of social interaction leads to less chance of depression. And that obviously leads to a greater and healthier community, especially when there's a bunch of interconnectedness. Only problem that I'm seeing here is like, it's during times of COVID, when there's like a lot of people around and it's like, it's a little bit tough. Getting a lot of interactions these days. So maybe finding like social events or like. Uh, that may be a bit more online geared might help, but obviously this problem is alleviating a little bit. I don't think we should have much to worry about.
Yeah, I really like how Freddie just brought up the idea about mental health, because. I do know that during the summer here, there is always stuff for us to do because it stays light very late. And so. It's easy for us to go to a lake or a river or go hiking, because we do have some really gorgeous natural resources over here, but. In the winter times and darker seasons. It is a lot harder for people to go out and have fun in that. And the winter time is. A pretty important time for mental health, because just the dark and the seasonal depression. And so through giving them more activities, we're helping them keep their mind off stuff. And so this, these types of. Just relative ideas and maybe, maybe they're not even any, anything we even present, but just kind of that. Thinking out to what teens are wanting to do. And then just Michelle, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so another idea we have is to set up a teen council or an open mic. At the Covington Community Park. And this would be a very good way to showcase all the talent we have in Covington. And a way for teens to hang out, network and get to know each other as well as grow and develop as a community.
Hey, swimming night at the, okay, like. Oh, I did not say that, right? Sorry. Alright, uh, the center, sorry, but I just came out of work somewhere. It's gonna spill really slow. But, um, the swimming night is a, it's pretty much over the summer where we'd have a. Uh, people come over at the center and then we can play movie. It could be like a PG movie, more like a. Yeah, young adult movie, because I know over the summer we do have movies, but they're more like. Targeted towards the younger audience, but we could just have more towards the young adult, like the thirteen till sixteen or like the teens one. So we could have that playing at the center while they do a swim in, so they can either swim around, play with their friends, or they could like watch the movies at the same time. Also, when it's really hot, I feel like definitely be appreciated, especially today.
And I'm like, I know during the summer it gets like light a lot, like. Later than usually in the winter and we couldn't do like more activities than like, we could do like a bonfire night or like. On like the movie night. I think those will all be really fun, just like to incorporate more activities at the park and ways for like. Like it should be like targeted more towards teens and like for them to hang out and have fun.
Yeah, so basically just elaborating on what everyone has said so far, we just don't see. Enough inclusion for teens in our community. And so. By providing stuff through Covington, we'll be keeping them safe, we'll be keeping them in Covington, because I do, I do know that many of my friends, we. Resort, we, not resort, that's the wrong words, but we are hesitant to going out to places like Kent Station sometimes, because sometimes we feel a bit unsafe. There or if we do want to go somewhere, we'll go to South Center and go bowling there. But then again, that's in South Center and so. Finding more activities for teens in the area is just kind of what we are planning on. Incorporating ourselves and just kind of increasing the awareness on. And I think that is all we have pretty much.
Wow, that was a great update from each of you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Are you open to taking questions? Does Council have any question? Jennifer?
Yes, hi. Thank you for that great presentation. I really enjoyed. You sharing in the introductions and having council participate as well. I thought that was a really nice touch. Um, and I love all of the ideas and to hear them and I'm. Glad that, that Ethan is here listening and obviously Jacqueline, uh, I'm sure takes. Copious notes of your, your ideas to pull into our parks and rec activities. I am, I have a couple of questions. I was curious, are you all meeting in person as a, as a commission yet? And if not, why? And if so, how's it going? And you know, if you can kind of. You know, describe the transition.
Yeah, so we are currently meeting hybrid. So it's honestly about fifty fifty, like half is online, half is in person. I think it's pretty good, honestly. Um, we don't seem to have very many issues going hybrid, because when you're hybrid, you can still like. Show the agenda on the screen for everyone there with, um, and it's not people in person. But I've been going in person and it's been really great to like see everyone. And I think. I work better with people in person and that's just my personal style, but, uh, it's been doing hybrid has been working really well.
When you are hybrid, do you find, you know, talking over each other and stuff? I noticed you guys really do. Very well, taking turns and talking without necessarily having to pass the baton like us older people have to do. Um, and so I'm curious when some of you are in person and some of you are. Online, is that more difficult, that, that back and forth communication?
Yeah, so it is a little bit more difficult, because I know that I do go in person and I'm a very chatty person at times. But. For those online, they do. They, um, we, when we're in person, we do make sure to constantly be asking those who are online. What they're thinking about the situation, because it is harder for them, because I have attended one online and it is a little bit more difficult to. Get your saying, but it's not too difficult, because you can still participate and everyone who is. In person, if someone on the screen raises a hand or anything, we all make sure that we're. Have our attention on them and making sure that they're heard, because it is harder sometimes hybrid, but we do think that it is worth it. So.
Okay, and then I know you've touched on this. I definitely know it, that our last meeting together and probably the one before that. I'm curious how recruiting for the commission is going and what future recruitment efforts look like. I heard. You know, the first few of you that introduced each other are seniors. And so I, I wanted to get a feel for. Recruitment and you know, the, the future. Look of the, of the commission. How, how are we doing?
Yeah, I can talk about that a little bit. Um, so honestly, a lot of us have only been on the commission for about a year. We had a big like group of people join us. And as far as recruitment, we recently, we've been doing pretty well with recruitment. I'm not sure how many positions we have on the council. I think it's. Thirteen, maybe something along lines of that and we're almost at that mark. So, um. Having, we don't necessarily have to fulfill like every single position, but we always want to have enough people that it feels like we can. Do everything that we want to do. And with our current capacity, I think we all feel like. Uh, we're able to fulfill every thing we want to do. Jacqueline, did you want to, do you want to talk about that a little bit? I feel like you would know more.
Sure. So the way the youth council works, we used to, you guys probably remember, those have been on the council for a while. We used to have the youth council members. When they joined, they would have to interview, re-interview each year and most of them. Just want to stay on until they graduate. And so we did, we were able to change that. So when a youth council member joins us, whether they're. A freshman, a sophomore, junior, senior, they're on with the youth council until they graduate. And we do have to work on recruiting, definitely when we, last year we had six members graduate. So that was a lot. We currently have nine youth council members and I think we're losing, who are my seniors? Naomi, Freddie. Losing two or three. You guys have told me, remind me. I know Naomi. Yeah, so we do always try to build back up when we, when we lose members that move on and graduate. To our, to our previous numbers. I think there are actually eleven positions on the youth council. Um, and currently nine of those are filled, so.
Alright, that's great. Wonderful. And I do hope you get to go to Olympia in January, those that. Are not graduating. It's, I'm sure a much better event in person. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I, I want to say, I think you guys have done a fabulous job presenting tonight. You, you're handling yourselves very well, very well organized and. And I also want to thank you for sharing your, your, your candid thoughts about what could be done better. What. I don't want to say is lacking is, it's just, it is what it is, but how can we change that, especially for the, the night activities and things for youth teens to do? And I'm just wondering, you know, of course I have my mind was starting to go, what spaces do we have where they can gather in the winter, right? So. I don't know if anyone has talked about maybe getting with the CEDIS or maybe the Chamber and seeing if there's any businesses that may. Want to open up the restaurant for a teen night or something like that. I mean, I'm sure you guys have lots of ideas, but. I think that would be a great opportunity to provide a meeting space that's not in your car in the McDonald's parking lot. Or in the park in the middle of winter when it's kind of chilly unless there's a camp, a fire or something going on. But. Anyway, I just, I want to thank you all for your candor and, and sharing that experience with us.
Um, I want to add on to what you said, um, but we were thinking about that and it is of course kind of difficult to. Work those things through, but we were thinking of something that is free for people. For teens our age, so or not even like completely exclusive to teens like middle schoolers through high schoolers, because. When kids go out, they don't want to be spending money, because there are some, some people don't have jobs or. They do have a job, but they can't work full-time and they have to pay for gas to get places. And so why, why would they want to be going somewhere to spend more money? And so what we were kind of thinking of for one idea at least, and we don't have full details worked out on this. But finding some building or room somewhere where we can make essentially kind of like a game room for. The teens and not necessarily like a game of Monopoly and then a game of Candy Land going, like not that type of stuff. Because that's not gonna bring people in, but just kind of like. Like, um. What is like, like shuffleboard? I can't think of any games like that, but stuff of that kind, like, um, what's the one? The one where you're like soccer on a. Whatever that one. That's the word. You, you guys all know, but something of that type of idea and that general concept, because it's something that they'd want to do. Inside and it could just be something that's open on certain days. Where they can come in and or they could just do homework there too, or just somewhere to be, because I know that a lot of people also just don't want to be home. All the time or like they're stuck at home in the winter all day long. None, well, of course they're going to school, but they come home from school and they're home until they go to bed. And then they get up and go to school and just, so giving people somewhere to be. Is something that I think would be really useful and helpful for the teens. And of course it would. Improve mental health. And so I really like how Freddie mentioned that earlier. Uh, the kind of the idea of giving them somewhere to be is something to do, improve, um, just so much more.
We had talked about, just like what you had said about in incorporating CEDIS. Particularly because you know, you talked about not in the parking lot at McDonald's. What if there was a sanctioned parking lot party that McDonald's hosted? You know what I mean? What if we could create? Some of these little things that kids like to do, but actually sanction them. What if we worked with the police department to. Allow for the parks to be open later into the evening, but work with the police department to make sure that we have extra patrols. To, you know, to make sure that we're keeping it safe. So it, it, I think some of the things that, you know, we've been talking about it as a group is. How do we coordinate and collaborate with businesses, churches, city members? Um, law enforcement to somehow create these opportunities for kids to, you know, stay busy over in the summer and still have fun.
Sean.
Yeah, thanks. You know, that kind of that night out. City sanctioned event actually triggered something to me. I was in Washington DC a while ago and then. San Francisco, they have built in like ping pong tables that are, you know, very sturdy. And so they can be left outside. And then obviously the paddles or people. Have to make sure they don't take them, but you know, they leave them there and ping pong balls. And so it's kind of out all the time and you can play. That maybe something, it'd be interesting to see if we could find someplace in the city that would allow for, maybe over by the. Uh, skate park, but you know, someplace closer downtown, maybe when our new town center is built, you know, some things like that, some outdoor ping pong tables. Or really high-end foosball table, like you said, that can stay out in the, in the rain or shuffleboard or whatever. Would be kind of cool for things to do at night. So, and if it's lit up, you know, it'd be safer to do that too, so.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else? I just want to say thank you again to each of you for. Volunteering of your free time, what little free time that you have. I know that you're very busy with everything you do, but. These are great ideas that you brought tonight and the energy. I wish I had your energy, but yeah, I appreciate your energy and everything that you do. And coming tonight and letting us know your ideas, because each and every one of those, I think that. I feel that we should move forward on some way to, to do this, because giving more options. For individuals to stay engaged is always a great idea. So it's. I mean, thinking of an outdoor ping pong like Sean said, or shuffleboard that Amelia and other ideas and foosball. Um, I know that we're talking about a. The new community center, but that's years away for funding and stuff to replace the aquatic center and. There'll be community rooms and stuff. And there'll be community rooms and stuff in there to engage, um, everybody in. Um, but we need to look for something now and you've got some great ideas. And I cannot wait for, um, seeing some of those come to fruition. Um, Amelia or Naomi or anybody else in the youth council, you have anything else you'd like to add?
Not that I know of, but yeah, I think on all of our behalf, just like, thank you for having us today, at least.
Well, thank you, Amelia, Naomi, Joshua, Fatima, Katie, Freddie and Michelle. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. And, uh, Shelley and Chuck, thank you for being here and, um, and helping guide them. I know that it says you're the adult leaders, but actually are youth are the leaders in that group. So I know you're just there to, to help facilitate. So, um, I just appreciate each of you for everything that you're doing for, for Covington and the entire surrounding community. So thank you each very much for all that you do. And if there's, yep, so I hope that you all have a very good evening and thank you again. I look forward to our next meeting when we can get together to, um, get more updates. So thank you. You all have a great evening and we will see you soon. Good night.
Good night, thank you.